We've got a couple of young guests with us. Mr. Leland, Mrs. Roden, in the fourth grade of the last county leadership in the lead.
...to the flag of the United States of America and the United Republic, for which we say that one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you, may be seated.
Amen.
First in the United's meeting, we will approve the agenda. Do we have an motion to...
None would be approved, it should be submitted.
I see.
Motion been made with a second, I will favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is recognition. Have any recognition from the board tonight? If not, public comment? Do we have any public comment tonight? Now, we asked, during public comment, do our five minutes, and please state your name for the minutes. Don't name names without anybody else on that.
Hi, my name's Vicki Washburn, and I was at the last board meeting in regards to the transgender. And I thought we had really worked through a lot of the issues that were happening in the school district at that time. But now we've come across, they're wearing masks. We've got numerous children who are not wearing them like they're supposed to. They don't have to wear them in gym, I'm told, or after school sports. But what about those kids who will not wear them? My daughter's here tonight. She was asked to leave the school. Where's her education if she is not wearing a mask? How can you tell her she can't be educated in public school? Because she chooses not to wear that mask. I let her educate, and we discuss what she finds. She researches, she watches the TV, she reads. So when she comes to us and says, "Mom, Dad, I'm not wearing it. It's not healthy, it's not good for me, and it's not good for my nieces, nephews, and these other kids." Why can I tell her, "Oh, you have to, because the school board says so"? And I can't do that. But I want to know, what are we going to offer to these students who refuse to wear a mask in school and that are just being asked to go home? Their education is just as important as the...anyone in here that has a mask on. Why are they being told, "You have to do something"? I don't care if we make arrangements in the building for those. I mean, I was there today and picked her up. Not a problem, I go pick her up. She has trouble with it on the bus. We're transporting her to solve that issue, to make sure our child is there. Now, we need to figure this out, so that they're not wearing masks, or those children that won't, that they have something that they can do. The principal told me today, right now, there's nothing offered. But you know what? You're denying my child education if she cannot be offered a substitute educational form without the mask wearing. Because my child is not going to wear it. She's talked to our doctors about them, she's went out and really done her research on this. And I have to back her in that. I mean, she's 16 years old. If she's going to do the research and come to us, then I think it's time to back our children. And the principal told me, they have nothing to offer. They can't discipline her for not wearing one. All they can do is request that I come get her. And she'll be right back in school tomorrow. And you know what? I'll be right back in school tomorrow picking her up. So my daughter's losing her education, and that's not fair to her. Because other kids might wear them, and they might not. When school first started, there was an option, which I thought was fair. Those kids that felt they needed to wear them, or parents who wanted their children to wear them, they had a right to do that. There's no reason why they can't wear them. And as I see, there's some here that are not wearing them. Because you have that choice. But are you asked to go home now? Are you being sent home? And you're not allowed to do your job. I don't see anyone being sent home and not allowed to do their job. But my daughter's sent home from school, and it's not getting her education. That is not fair. Not fair to her, not fair to us, and not fair to other students. Other students are going through the school, pulling them down. And they have to rush to get them back up, and they can't breathe, and they're getting headaches. And all of this because they choose to try to fit in and do what they're being told. And it's just not fair that we're asking our kids to suffer. You know, I would say, we need to come up with another alternative here. If you guys feel masks are important, then leave that up to parents and those students in the classrooms to make that decision. But don't be sending our kids home. They're not being educated. Why, how is that fair? So we need to decide what we're going to do about this situation. I think it's very important, because our sports players don't have to wear them when they're playing their sports. They don't have to wear them in a gym class. Why? Because it's too hard on them to breathe. So what difference is it if our kids are running up and down steps, walking from building to building, and the younger students, running around playing in the classroom? Why do they got to wear them? Let's stop and really look this situation over and make a decision that's fair to every student. Just like everyone made this decision that in safety protocols, the transgender was covered. Both the transgender children and our non-transgender children are protected. I don't see blood running down the hallways. But I do have a feeling that we're going to be leaving our students behind. And that means people aren't going to move here, because we ain't got this education we need. So I'm concerned about the future and about today. So I'm asking you to please put this on the agenda for this evening, and try to help come up with a solution that would benefit all of the Lee County public schools. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
My name is Shirley Washburn, and I'm here over the mask mandate. I'm sure most of you know me, I'm 16 and I go to Thomas Walker. I'm here to tell you, masks do more harm than good. A close friend of mine wears them from the moment she gets on the bus in the morning to the moment she gets home from work, and during work. She was dizzy, had horrible headaches, and couldn't breathe. Also, a test was done on a group of kids. They put a mask on a five-year-old, and for three minutes, they took it off and checked their oxygen. It had dropped 18 to 20 percent. A 12-year-old was asked to wear a mask for eight hours. Afterwards, they checked the mask, more things were found, such as mold spores, blue bacteria, 15 other types of germs. Awesome. It's been proven COVID can pass through the masks. When it gets through the fibers, it gets stuck, and when we get it, we get it anyways. With masks, we're more likely to get it as well. Someone with COVID has a mask and it coughs, it sprays out the top six feet, and outside's three feet, and then it drops, and we get it. By wearing these masks, we're affecting our brains as well. These transgender brains are more mature than the younger students. This will affect them for the rest of their lives, and ours. I know COVID's a priority, but us students, we're getting hurt more by wearing these masks. Every day I'm watching my friends, half my friends have to pull it, and they're just coughing and trying to breathe. Two out of five of my friends already has sinus infections from the masks. Because when you breathe out, mold spores get stuck, and then you're just breathing them right back in. And from what I've read, what I've watched, what I've done, researched on, these masks are affecting us more than without them. When I took my mask off, I could breathe, I could focus more, I can do better without my mask than with it. But I know it's your guys' job to protect us, but you're kind of putting us in more danger by making us wear these. So all I'm asking is you think seriously about how much carbon dioxide we're breathing in every day. And these little kids, they don't know, they don't know the danger of these masks. So please take the time and think about us, other than COVID, for once, please, and thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Rod Everly. I was a proud member of the United States Army, the 82nd era. I took an oath of listening, and it reads. I, Rod Everly, solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Saint, and that I will obey the orders of the United States and the orders of the officers appointed over me according to the regulations and the uniform code of military justice. So help me God. First, I want to acknowledge and thank Vice Chair, Mr. Gary Williams, who ran on campaign slogan of Kids First. Not only ran by that slogan, Mr. Williams, but you conscientiously made the decision that you believe prioritized the kids of Lee County being the first priority. And I have the utmost gratitude and appreciation for that. So thank you, Peter. Secondly, I also want to acknowledge and thank the Chair of the School, Mr. Mike Gilwell, who also desires that kids are treated with fairness and equality as well. The reason that I'm here tonight is that I am deeply concerned about this Kids Last Movement that exists on this board. Their votes to not allow current eighth graders in our county to ride a bus from Jonesville Middle or Flatwoods to Thomas Walker High School with their siblings is very disturbing. One boy member cited that they wanted to be as efficient as possible, and that was her reason for voting against these kids being able to ride. Now, look, I'm not a math scholar, but the bus is traveling from Jonesville to Thomas Walker High every day regardless. You aren't saving one red seat. This makes absolutely no sense to me, or anyone else that's able to think or reason clearly. I just want to ask, I'm here tonight, is anybody here in favor of that bus route being eliminated? If you were in favor of that bus route being eliminated, just raise your hand. Let the record show, no one here in attendance is in favor of that bus route having been eliminated, not even the three who thought that was a good decision last month and the month before. You didn't raise your hands either. I heard another board member state at last month's meeting that she was a believer in Jesus Christ, and that we should love everyone. I hope that is true, that you are a Christian, and that is the greatest decision any of us can ever make. And that should be the utmost importance of everything that has ever been decided in life. And I hope that because you are a Christian, that you have been taught and openly demonstrated how to love everyone. But I got to ask, where's the love for those kids? Where is the love for those kids that rely on that bus that you prohibit them from riding, to take them to school every day? Where is the love for those kids, and why isn't love being demonstrated towards those children? Where's the love, where's the love for single-parent moms that are doing everything humanly possible to hold down a job, put food on the table, pay the monthly bills? Why isn't love being demonstrated toward these moms instead of complicating their lives by prohibiting their kids to ride the bus that's been running since 2013? I ask, why isn't love and understanding being demonstrated towards them? If anyone should be a voice for students, single-parent moms, and working-class mom and dads to encourage every student to go to school and make that abundantly possible, it should be those on this board that profess Jesus Christ as their Lord and Savior. And I did not witness that being done at last month's meeting. Votes and decisions to sustain the elimination of the bus route from Jonesville Middle School and Flatwoods Elementary to Thomas Walker High demonstrated that you, as board members of this Kids Last Movement, think that openly discriminating against younger students who are already pre-enrolled at their respective school of choice for months is somehow acceptable in your hearts and in your minds, and that is absolutely shameful.
Thirty seconds, I'm sorry.
The Bible says in Proverbs 3, verse 5 and 6, "Trust in the Lord with all thy heart, and lean not to thy understanding; all thy ways acknowledge him, and he should direct thy paths." And I feel that these three board members that voted against these kids being able to board that bus never contacted God in prayer. I feel he was left out of that decision. I don't think at any given point in time that any of the three in this Kids Last Movement asked, "God, how would this affect these students? Would this make life tougher on these families"? Or did you just decide not to acknowledge God on this decision at all? You leaned on your own understanding, and have yet to this very moment been able to give a reason how this benefits one student in this county. Before tonight's meeting, and I love what you did, young man, leading us in the pledge of allegiance, and part of that is justice for all. Where is the justice for these kids?
I got out of purpose, I got to cut you off.
Thank you, sir.
Can I give a minute in my time? Because I don't want to go be about two minutes.
Yeah, I mean, just out of purpose, like I said, we got...
Thank you, Washburn.
Yes.
Lee County can no longer afford leadership that adopts bus policies of 1959. Lee County can no longer afford leadership, as their own understanding leads its students and staff back to 1989. Lee County needs men and women to say, "What the last line of my military oath reads, so help root God, and ask for his wisdom to lead, guide, and direct us." And I have no doubt, if you're willing to humble yourself to Jesus Christ, and then and only then, will you be able to demonstrate love in Lee County, and lead Lee County into the future. Thank you.
I bless you, God.
I'm just going to read something. In 17, my name's Dale Washburn. In September 17, 1787, the Constitutional Convention took place. Ben Franklin walked out of there, and he was asked, "What kind of government do we have?" He said, "A republic, if you can keep it." There was people suing in a lot of other states over these mask mandates. It's going to be a mess. Children are being harmed with them, it's obvious. You can either get rid of them, let our immune systems work, put fear behind you. If fear had been a part of this country in the beginning, we wouldn't be America. It's time to put fear behind us and let our kids be kids. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Chelsea. I have a first grader up garden. And I know these are going to be like in your nightmares tonight, but I did want to talk about masks. I know it's, you know, a lot, but I just wanted to read you an excerpt from a Wall Street Journal article that said, "It asks, 'Does masks reduce COVID transmission in children? Believe it or not, we could find only a single retrospective study on the question, and its results were inconclusive. Yet, two weeks ago, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention sternly decreed that 56 million U.S. children and adolescents, vaccinated or not, should cover their faces regardless of the prevalence of infection in their community. The possible psychological harm of widespread masking is an even greater worry. Facial expressions are integral to human connection, particularly for young children who are only learning how to signal fear, confusion, and happiness. Covering a child's face mutes these non-verbal forms of communication and can result in robotic and emotionless interactions, anxiety, and depression. Seeing people speak is a building block of phonetic development. It is especially important for children with disabilities such as hearing impairment.'" Was a student here at Lee County. I remember Miss Morstein, Miss Ely, Miss Felcher smiles all the time. I love seeing smiles. I want my daughter to see her teachers and her classmates, and I want them to see her face. If it was a matter of masks working, you know, I could understand, but that's definitely up in the air, especially with the Delta variant. I hate to repeat all this, because I know everybody sees so much online, but it is so infectious that only N95s are proving to be effective against it. So to make kids wear these cloth masks that we know aren't doing anything, it just seems pointless to me. And I know you've got the children's best interest at heart, so I know these are not easy decisions. I just ask that you let the parents decide. You know, if a parent feels like their child's better protected with a mask, wear a mask. If I don't want my child to wear a mask, I feel like I have a prerogative for her not to have to wear a mask. I also want to share that my daughter, this one, she's one, I had to take her to the ER about three weeks ago for respiratory distress. They tested her for COVID, she was positive, and sent her to the pediatric ICU at Knights Wonders. They tested her there for all kinds of viruses. She was negative for COVID, but positive for RSV and parainfluenza, which I have never heard of. But according to the Virginia Department of Health, non-COVID-19 respiratory viruses are up significantly. The, what they're trying to scare us with, and everybody should have a sense of fear for everything in life, because we could die at any moment, but I think they're valid health. The overall news media is hyping it up to scare everybody. And so I hope that you all will stand in the way of people who have an agenda other than protecting against COVID. I don't think that's their goal. I hope you'll stand in the way for our children and help the parents to make the decision for their, for their children. I also want to remind you that, you know, I don't agree with the group adopting a transgender policy. I don't agree with a mask mandate. I want, I hope that each of you will ask yourselves, "Where are you going to draw the line? Are you, you didn't draw it with transgender, you didn't draw it with mask mandate? Are you going to draw it with vaccine mandates for your employees? What if it comes to, and it may not, vaccine mandates for students? Will you say no then?" And I realize that funding is important, and I'm sure they threaten you with that to try to make you make decisions. But also, parents will withdraw their children, and I know that loses funding too. So I know that, or I hope that each of you, I feel like you do, have Lee County's best interest at heart, and I hope you'll make those decisions accordingly, and thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other public comment?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Dean. I'm Phil Dinsley, District 3. I have with me Rod Dryden, Maddox, a second grader, Landon, fourth grader. I want to really commend Dryden for what they've done for the last year. The boys are still behind, but Dryden did everything they could. I want to speak in support of one program that helped them last year. I've talked to Mr. Dean about it. The after-school remediation program. 25% of your COVID fund is earmarked for remediation. Part of your Title I fund is earmarked for remediation. That program, five days a week, from 3:00 to 5:00 o'clock, really made a difference in these boys last year when they were in school. Like I said, they're still behind, but the school's doing everything they can. When we're out of school, it just doesn't work, and we all know that. But I brought them tonight to show them how our government works, how school boards work. I want to speak in favor of the after-school remediation program. Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you. Any other public comment tonight? If not, we're going to move into board comment. I was talking about saying, I hope you all hang around, especially with the masks and some things, I'm sure we're going to discuss some of it tonight. Any other board comment?
Yeah. As far as the mask situation, do we have any choice?
I mean, the governor came out with...
It's not the Lee County school.
It's not a school board decision. And it ultimately was issued by Health Commissioner, and it sent to them saying that they were the ones who stood in for us.
I mean, I'm for whatever the parents want, but the governor doesn't care about that. So my daughter hates wearing them. Every day when I figure up a school, she complains about having had to wear a mask. We're only into, what, four or five days of school so far? She's already sick of it. I tell her, "I can't help you there. You got to wear it, because that's what the governor said." So I have sympathy for everybody that's here, just the mask simply out of this school board's hands. It really is.
Any other board comment?
I mean, Rob said it, "Out of our hands."
You have grandchildren, I have grandchildren. I have two kids that teach and, you know, understand. They don't like it either, but, you know, I've taken consideration of kids with anxiety, asthma. I have asthma myself. And, but we have to abide by the law. It's not our decision, it's what the law tells us we can't do. So we just do the best we can to take care, we can to take care of these kids.
What about you?
I have something I could say that I better keep to myself.
Kind of an outspoken request of yours.
Just not wish to be, yes.
So I'll say a little, or ask a little bit. Mr. Sturgill, what law are you pertaining to about masks?
Well, first, there was a Senate bill that came out in 1303, and in that was language that specified that school boards had to abide by guidance from the CDC to the maximum extent of practice. And that was the key words, "to the maximum extent of practice." In looking at potential arguments on that, then the governor's office came down today about 2:00 o'clock and said, "If there's any ambiguity at all with it, I'm going to issue this order, and it's in this, through the Health Commissioner's office, and bottom line, masks are mandated for both public and private education in Virginia right now." And that there is power to enforce that, and that's through the Health Department.
What if you said, "Heh, with it," what would happen to our students?
I think if, you said that absolutely to heck with it, and there'd be numbers of lawsuits filed dealing with that, I think that they would probably come in and just enforce, take control, basically, and say, "You have to comply with state law." There'd be an injunction put in place, mandating us to stay in state law, state law, and so there's really not much of a choice. If there was options, we would certainly be discussing them, because I think I clearly know your all stance on it, and I think I clearly know what the community's stance is.
The law doesn't say our students can't be kept home if they're not lying, or that we can't get...
So we're going to discuss some of that. So you said, "public and private." So the governor's telling private businesses that you have to wear masks?
That was in the order today.
And I have to say, at some point, we are going to have to ask ourselves, "What will roll out?" I just want to say that publicly, because it's getting way out. You have no rights anymore, not even with your own face, and it's pretty sad. I want my kids to have the option, just like I do. But if we don't, we don't at this point. I'm not a lawyer, I can't afford to fight this. My kids wear a mask, I guess, I'm out there at school with them all day, I'm sure they don't have the time, but I don't like it a bit more than anybody else does. We'll have to move forward and see what we can do later on at this point. But yes, I do want to get to the point... But yes, I do want to get to the point where sending somebody home because they don't have a mask on, is that legal? But again, from a legal standpoint, I got to ask because it's all over my account, this is happening. I don't know how to answer it.
Well, and I don't know how they answer that in public session either. That's something that I certainly will be talking with Mr. Dean about, to the extent of that, looking at various options. Because I do believe that it's of the utmost importance, while we need to comply, that we're also taking care of the needs of all students.
Right. Nobody wants to get sick, obviously.
Right. And so we will be looking at the legalities dealing with that. But that's, you know, we have discussed that. We've been looking at that. But, you know, I don't feel comfortable answering direct questions in that session.
So we're going to get a question. I'm going to answer that right. Can we legally send a kid home for not wearing a mask?
I'll talk to Mr. Sturgill and-
Right. Not right now, but we need, I like to have an answer very quick on that because it's going to come up again, I'm sure. So we'll move along. We have a board comment or board argument moment, so. Any other board comment? If not, do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion been made with a second in the discussion on the consent agenda. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any reports from the vote? If not, we provide a long report from the Division Secretary, Mr. Dean.
Mr. Chairman, in your report, in your packet, you have the Kingsmore Times and those drawing cards. I think all of those this month were from Flatwoods. I encourage you to look at those. Reading and looking at those from the students there at Flatwoods. I think it's something we do every month, and I encourage everybody to do that.
I'm trying to say my granddaughter just wanted-
On the first day at school, Ms. Belcher and I went and visited every school, and I will say that was probably the happiest day since March 13th, 2020 because we saw kids enjoying being at school. We saw, like what the one young lady said, people smiling. I told her, I think when we pulled up to Flatwoods, I think it was Flatwoods, kids were out on swings, playing, having a ball. It was wonderful. Since then, you know, we've had to, by state law, change the optional mask to, you know, mandatory mask. But it's still good to see the number of students in school compared to what we had last year. So I'd like to report, the first day at school went really well. We did have one traffic accident, but no one was hurt. So I'd like to report that. Enrollment, currently we're at 2806. The budget was billed on 2865. So we're below the budget number, but I will talk to you in a few minutes with an action item about carryover funds that will help us with that. Operations update, you have that report in your packet. If you have any questions on that, I'll be more glad to try to answer those. I will tell you that for the first time, and I don't know how long, we have air conditioning, I think in every room at the vocational school that is supposed to have air conditioning because that system has not worked, and I couldn't tell you when. We replaced a large amount of piping in there, and the chillers are actually working. And those people are very happy that that system is actually working like it's supposed to be. Been doing a whole lot of work on lights at both football fields, getting those ready for football season. And we're starting to work on the bowlers. I think I saw one of the, one of the, one of the old ones at the vocational school get pulled out today. They've got the ones unhooked at Lee High, and they're working in other schools to get those up and running for winter. Transportation update, that is in your packet. A lot of work going on there with bus routes. We went from about a third of the normal riding the bus last year to almost full bus riding this year. So we've had some challenges with bus routes, but we're getting those worked out. I can tell you, I think the first day, several of us were here with our bus radios, listening and offering help if we needed to help anybody. We were probably here until about a quarter to 6:00. That's came way down now that people know their routes and students know which bus to get on. And so that's getting a whole lot better. And update on the meal prices, thanks for adults, lunch is $3.85, and breakfast is $2.30. So I just need to give you notice on that. On that note, I will also say that we've got some notices from the State Department and the feds on lunches. I think Mr. Welch is doing a great job, and I would like to compliment our cafeteria staff for the work they have done all through the pandemic and continue to do. Some of the food that we serve are not our choice. I would rather have a white biscuit anytime than the wheat biscuits, but now we're federally mandated to serve the wheat biscuits. Kind of like the mask, I mean, it's not our fault. It's not our choice. And we're also starting to experience some shortages of food. Certain items that are on our menu, when we have to change the menu, we got noticed today from Conagra that there were some shortages on certain things. And so our menus may change. We'll try to make sure everybody's notified of that because I know some kids bring their lunch depending on what we've got. So we'll try to make sure everybody's notified on that. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I was waiting business.
I can't help it. We don't have any unfinished business, but if you want to start in the first action item, I'll be more than glad to.
Sure.
You've got a copy of the new education plan. We have shortened that. It does start off by talking about Senate Bill 1303, which took away the optional mask. We already had this printed before we got the order today from the Health Commissioner, so I don't know that I'll add that because it doesn't really change anything for having to wear a mask. It goes through some of the mitigation strategies that we're doing. We're providing hand sanitizer for all the schools. We're providing masks for all the schools. If any student shows up without a mask, they've got boxes of masks on the buses. It goes through, we're monitoring with the State Department and the CDC. It also talks about quarantine guidelines and individuals who are not required to quarantine. So if you have any questions on that, I'd be more than glad to answer them. Currently, we do not have the remote option. I have talked to a lot of people since school has started. A whole lot of people since we required the mask mandate. I haven't had a teacher yet tell me that we need to offer remote because they said that they do not feel that students are learning remotely. They do not feel they can do their job best remotely. Kids that are in quarantine, I have asked the schools to work with those kids, give them their work. We're not counting them absent if they do their work. But we have lost numbers. But financially, I would tell you we probably need to offer a remote option. The educator in me says no. And that's just as clear as I can say it because as a former teacher, I know our teachers were stressed out last year trying to do that. I don't feel they can do either job well if we did offer it.
I don't either.
The teachers are back teaching five days a week now. They can't give you delivery packets all day on Friday.
No, we can't, there's no option now, and I think Mr. Sturgill could agree with this. On Senate Bill 1303, we have to offer in person every day. So last year, we did it four days a week, and we used the fifth day to deliver packets. We made all kinds of deliveries, meal deliveries, packet pickups.
If we do end up offering a remote option, we've got to have very strict guidelines. It can't just be a excuse not to send your kids to school.
And I talked to Mr. Anthe, right. I talked to Mr. Sturgill about that some, and you know, I think we could put some restrictions on it. There's some across the region that says you only can do remote if you have internet. We have a number of people who don't have internet. You have to maintain a C average. I have read that. If you don't do that, you have to come back to school. So there is some things you could do. I mean, I talked to teachers last year that were so disheartened that they would take a packet to somebody's house and leave it and never get it back.
Is this kind of like the Region 7 forum that they have for remote?
There is a Region 7 virtual academy that started not long after the pandemic started. So we did not join that.
Why not? Why couldn't we just do that?
I'm usually, did not make the log.
It was like a $10,000 upfront, $2,600 per student. And if any kid goes remote, we have to allow them to come back in person. So if you paid $2,600 for a virtual program, and they decided three days later they want to come back, you have to let them. I don't think most people would give it back to us. But I might be surprised, but I doubt they would give it back to us. So financially, we didn't think it made sense. There was an upfront cost per child, and they have a whole lot of restrictions on there. I think you had to pass certain subjects last year before you could be a part of that Region 7. I think you have to maintain a C. I think if you have so many absences from it, you automatically are kicked out. I just didn't think it made sense, and the superintendent before me, when it started, didn't think it made sense either. That's why we never joined. We just didn't think it applied well for our community because there is a large number that don't have internet. And that's one of the requirements of the Region 7 Virtual Academy. You have to have internet. So anybody who doesn't have it, automatically have luck.
The other thing, because I'm not willing to go back to what we did last year. Of course, teachers have to teach in person, then prepare remote lessons too. I mean, if we're going to go back, we have to find some way to do our own academy or something. But we have one or two that focus on teaching.
And that's what I want to say. I know well, for this year, we have to go that route is that we have a certain teachers in each building that does remote. I know it's due. I know it might cost some money. It's not going to be done. And first of all, thank you and everybody who will, because we want to beat you to death up here. We know we're trying to follow the law and do things right. Nobody here wants to break the law, including myself. I think some of them's crazy, and I don't agree with them, but we got to get through this. But out of respect for our teachers, you can't ask them to do both anymore. It did not work last year. Nobody's going to ever convince me that it did.
I agree.
I agree, and you're not beating me up. I think you could ask Mr. Sturgill, as soon as the governor made his announcement, I was on the phone with him within a few minutes and said, is there any way this may not apply to us? And I knew the answer before I called him. I just-
I don't hate masks either. Obviously, we're stuck with them for now, and if they want to wear masks, make any.
One thing I would like to ask maybe the board on this education plan, I think some of you had mentioned, last year we did do bus aids. We did them before school and after school. Bus aids, they checked the bus rider's temperature before they got on the bus. Now we're doing it at the door. I don't know how necessary the bus aids are in the afternoon. Kids have already been to school all day. We're just taking them home. I don't know that it wouldn't be a bad idea to do bus aids in the morning. We can use CARES money. I can give you the dollar amount that it cost last year. It would cost a little more because of the increase in wages. But we're, you know, we're picking kids up at the house, and we're checking the temperature when they get to school. We could probably prevent, or possibly prevent, some of them coming to school by taking their temperature at the house. I don't know, and I thank Ms. Willis for all the work she did on bus aids last year. I don't know if we can get enough people to have a bus aid on every bus. We got a hard time last year. But I think we did, you know, stop some kids before getting on the bus when we took their temperature, and it was 100, 101, 102, and just told them, you need to turn around and go back to the house. We're not going to let you on the bus because, you know, you've got some issues.
You know my opinion on that. And I agree, and the whole deal is, if we're taking your temperature before you walk in the building, why are we letting kids get on the bus full of other kids and not taking their temperature before they get on the bus? So I think we should do bus aids at least on Christmas or something and spend some of that money on that.
And we can do that administratively, and we'll try to get as many bus aids as possible. I will say that if we have some of our already contracted people that are bus aids, you know, they need to make sure they fulfill their contract, and, you know, we can't double dip and pay them for doing two jobs at one time. We can check on that, but I think it will help, and I would almost say, maybe for the first week when we started bus aids, let them do morning and afternoon to keep those kids, make sure they know what's going on. They should be in an assigned seat. So if we have any quarantining or any contact tracing, we know. I have the utmost respect for a bus driver. You two ladies drove a bus. I would never probably drive a bus. And I don't know how you can monitor mask wearing, make sure they stay in the same seat, and do what you need to do driving a bus. So, you know, we could try it morning and afternoon for a little while, and if we see we don't need it in the afternoon, kind of phase it out and just do the morning, if you all think that's an appropriate idea.
Back to the in-person. So, and I want everybody on the board, like Rob does, and I will again, if we have to offer remote, and I understand we enroll us down, and we need enrollment money, no doubt. We will maybe, maybe not this year, but everybody can ask. But certain teachers teach remote, other ones teach in-person. I think that's only fair to everybody.
We may have to hire a couple of teachers.
And I'm fine with that, as long as we can afford to hire them. But I think you can get a consensus from everybody here. That's how remote needs to move forward if we go that route.
And administratively, we can, you know, kind of in the back, plan that. I really don't want to go remote. I mean, I tossed the idea out there to some of you, and I wanted you all to think about it.
And the public, it's 50/50. You got some that do some though, so there's no win here.
The teachers, I didn't talk to a teacher who was in favor of it. Principals, probably 50/50. And I got everything from, maybe we should, because that's the craziest thing we've done. That was some of the responses I got.
And like you said, we're not running packets. If you got internet, you want to be remote, you've got to have internet. Your responsibility as a parent, see if you've got internet or provide education remotely. I don't have internet 90 miles, not good internet. I don't think it's a good option for me, but others might. If we give that option, that option ought to be given to a teacher as well to say, we're leveling up your duty. We should, in my opinion, just because somebody wants to stay home and do remote. If we have to hire, I'm okay with that. As long as the budget's good. And all the people that's not enrolled are not coming. It'd be nice to know how many would enroll if we offered this remote.
And I will say, and I think Ms. Willis is here, and she can, if I'm wrong, I think if we did have to hire teachers to do that option, we were only doing that option because of COVID. We could use CARES money for that.
Right, and I would.
So technically, it wouldn't affect the budget.
Again, could we, sorry, could we add in that if you're on remote, you stay remote through that whole semester?
No.
Why?
Senate Bill 1303 says we have to offer in person at any moment.
They can go remote one day and not the next?
No. If they went remote and wanted to come back, we would have to take them.
One day and the next?
No. We could say, you go remote. You've got one shot at it. If you don't stay remote, you're not going remote again.
That's fine. Then we're just not week by week?
No, not week by week, but if they went remote and wanted to come back, we have to take them back.
And I agree.
But they can't, we could put in there that if you went remote once, you don't get to go remote as many times as you want.
Which is part of some of Mr. Anthe's guidelines.
So why don't we poll these parents that are taking their kids out of school and say, if we offer this remote option, would you re-enroll your kids if they can't go to school?
We can do that because Ms. Bobby's got a list of, you know, anyone who homeschools.
We have a lot of children that aren't doing anything. We've got to get them educated on where to go.
One last question for me. I was shut up and got a call from a doctor in Miami County. A lot of confusion on who's quarantined, who's not quarantined, how we handle it, who does what. So walk us through, if a child walks in, they feel sick, they get sent home, they come in. they come in, they get a call from the parents saying, my child's positive. Obviously, they're in quarantine. What happens to the students in that class and the teacher in that class?
Okay, on our new education plan, we put that in there, that quarantine period is 10 days for the students. So they can't come back to school for 10 days. It's recommended 14, but we set 10 if they don't have any symptoms.
Every student in that class?
No.
If they have been within six feet of the child.
It'll be double-checked. It's within less than three feet if the children are masked. Now, a bunch of our chairs are less than three feet apart. So what we've been doing, and when we get a positive notification, I usually get notified, I call Jimmy Hall, the lead nurse, have her contact that school, and she walks them through contact tracing. And with the help of the seating charts, with the help of a bus seating chart, she determines who would be a close contact. Then we notify all of those that they are in quarantine. And then that's when the school reaches out to them and provides them with the work, because we put them in quarantine, you know, to try to prevent an outbreak.
But the CDC is not contact tracing.
The health department said they would help us if we didn't want to take care of it. We've got the seating charts. So far, Ms. Hall has been able to help every school do that. And we can do it relatively quickly. Because if we turn it over, I think she and I talked about it today, if we turn it over to the health department, you're going to call them and say, so-and-so tested positive. Then when they are able, they're going to call that person and say, who were you around? They're going to call the school and say, we need seating charts, we need to know who everybody was around. Then they're going to contact those people. We've just been taking care of it because we could do it quicker and get those people sent home quicker and hope to prevent, you know, more positive cases. They have offered to help us, and anytime we've called them, they have helped us. But so far, Ms. Hall and the school nurses and the school principals have been able to take care of it. I sent out a notice to the faculty and the staff, and then I asked Ms. Sumter to send out an all-call to every phone number we have for that school that we have a positive case. And then we will notify you if you're a close contact. If they don't get a phone call, they should, I guess, rest assured, we've checked, we don't think that they're a close contact.
Okay, and that's one answer to the question, because what's happening is when the phone call goes out of the all-call of the positive case in school, the clinic in Miami is getting bombarded with tests. People running in with their kids wanting to test and test. Zero symptoms, but they run them out of tests because of that.
And a lot of it, I think, is fear. We are, we're airing on the side of, are they maybe a contact or they maybe not? And if they're in that maybe zone, we're saying they probably are, and we're airing on the side of safety.
So let me ask you this, can we, as the system, or you as superintendent, somebody send out a memo of some kind saying, this is how we do this? This is not to put you in a panic mode? Seating charts, all that stuff?
Yes, I can.
Go on the website or something, just anything.
We can get together administratively, we can draft something, send it out to the schools, and ask them to send it out to all families.
Right. That's one.
And I will say, I had some phone calls. I mean, between Friday afternoon and Monday, when I got here over the mask, I don't want to have any cussing I took that morning. It is what it is, but that and people wanting me to tell them who the positive case was at a school. Now, we're not going to do that. And they got upset over that.
Just like it's nobody's business who's been vaccinated or not.
Correct. And, you know, they get mad at me if they won't, but I'm not telling them who the positive cases. I haven't told you all who the positive cases is.
Right.
You know, I notify you all when we send out notices, but if you all ask me, I tell you, I'm not going to tell you either, even if I knew. A lot of times, I don't know. If I don't need to know, they don't tell me. Sometimes they tell me, to help them with contact tracing, and I get with Ms. Hall, but a lot of times, I don't know, because they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. And, you know, people get mad over that, they get mad over it. I'm doing my job, and I can't tell them who the one positive case was. I know it probably makes them feel better, but it's just not happening. But I can draft something like that, we can send it out to the school to try to clear that up.
Oh, thank you.
So.
Is there any action on this plan?
I would like y'all to approve it if you agree with what I have given you. That's our current plan, what we're doing, and how we're mitigating the pandemic the best we can. And currently, there is no remote option on it.
We have a motion for action out of B.
I think a motion, we approved the education plan for 2021, 2022, 2023.
Motion's been made out of C. Any more discussion? All papers say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Next is action out of B. Mr. Dean, for one, nothing to worry.
Asking permission from you all, or grant permission for me to go to the board of supervisors and ask to reappropriate 1.1, $1,813,059.23, which was a combination of savings and increased revenue with some of the COVID money last year. We need to go to the board of supervisors, ask them to reappropriate. That's our general fund for this year, so I'm asking you all permission to go do that.
Motion on action out of B.
I'll submit.
Motion's been made out of C.
Say it again.
Any more discussion? All papers say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Dean, no action to C.
Mr. Chairman, on C, last year, when we got our final number, it was determined that the board of supervisors gave us $28,401 in excess of what they had to give us in the past. And I think agreement before previous board and the board of supervisors, that is divided up into one-third and two-thirds. One-third of that, which would be $9,467, would go back to the board of supervisors. $18,934 of it would come to us. I'm asking permission when I go to the board of supervisors and ask for the 1.8 million, to ask for the two-thirds of the excess appropriation left.
To be in capital reserve.
Going capital reserve fund, yes, sir.
No motion on action out of C.
Mark.
Motion's been made with a say. All papers say aye.
Aye.
Sorry to ask about discussion, if you got it. Motion carries. Next is action out of D. If any to approve the proposal from Secure Futures, they love C.
Mr. Chairman, we have Matt McFadden here with Secure Futures. I think he has a short presentation. This is the solar project that I have talked with you all in the past about the solar array at the school. They also have the ability to do some roof restoration in combination of the solar project for the roofs. He can walk you through it. I know sometime last month, when I talked to you all about it, I didn't have all the answers, so I just asked Matt to come. I think he's got all the answers. I think he can answer your questions, and I'll turn it over to Matt. I think he's got his presentation. But it's that same project we showed you some last time, sort of solar arrays. I did tell him, I think we'd like to have all of those on the roof, and I think he can speak to that. So Matt, I'll turn that over to you.
Thank you. Bear with me just a moment. So first off, I want to thank you guys for having me down. And I'll try to make this quick, but I've got some information to go through. Mr. Dean and Mark have been very, very welcoming, as yourself, Garrett. I don't know if you recall meeting me, but essentially, we've been working on this for a while, and I've made a few trips down to, I've been on every roof, I think, except for Thomas Walker, is all the ones that I've been on. But I'll kind of go over everything with you guys, tell you a little bit about me, who I am, where I'm from, all that stuff. So my name is Matt McFadden, and I'm a lifelong resident of Wise County. I attended Wise County schools as a child, and went to MECC as I was an adult. I worked here until 2018. I was a training manager at Crutchfield. And at that point in time, I decided to try to give Northern Virginia a shot. As you can kind of imagine, that didn't really fit me very well. It's just not the same. So, you know, I came back home and I worked remotely for the company I was doing project management for, for about a year and a half. I'll tell you right now, there's no place I'd rather be than Wise, Cleveland, around here. This is, this is it for me. This is where I want to go with the ground at. This is where I want my kid to raise our family. But essentially, I was, you know, working a lot, didn't really see a lot of benefits locally. It benefited me, but I saw this opportunity to come up with Secure Futures Solar. They had partnered with Mountain High Community College, and were really bent on creating a workforce here. And I was interested, so I applied, and I got it with my background in project management and training, et cetera. So, yeah, I really wanted this to work out and see what we can do. So, going to go over to this one, and this is something that's pretty cool. So this is growth. A report released in 2020 from Charlotte School Based Green Energy Nonprofit Generation 180 reported that the number of schools using solar has tripled from 29 to 89 locations since 2017. The top three school districts that have solar are Richmond, which we actually did through a power purchase agreement, as I'm proposing to you guys, and Hanover, which we didn't do, and Powhatan, which we didn't do. Virginia is now up from 20th in the nation with solar installed to 8th in the nation. Now, that's cool, right? That means a lot of people are seeing the benefits of it, a lot of people are saving money. But what's the big problem with it? Well, I'll show you. Where do you see most of the solar installed? It's not here. And that's not good. That means we don't get the jobs from it, we're not getting the benefits from it. And believe it or not, until 2021, PPAs were legal for our side of the state. Tony Smith, who is the owner of the company I represent, worked with legislators and brought in HB 2034 in 2021, and that allowed solar PPAs to be legal for our side of the state. So now we can take advantage of what Northern Virginia has had for the last four or five years. As we've seen in the past, electricity companies, I'll take a short hint. Who's seen their power bill go down? Anybody? It just keeps going up, right? So, and that's what's going to happen with the 2019 Clean Economy Act. We're going to see a lot of power bill changes. And I'll kind of explain a little bit more about that. So with that, you're seeing a lot of, a lot of utility companies required to go forward with clean energy. They're required to get green energy, they're required to get green energy. Who do you guys think is going to pay for that? Do you think it's going to be the profits of the utility companies? No, it's going to be us. Exactly. I mean, we're all going to pay for it. So you're going to pay for green energy one way or another. And what I'm proposing is that you pay for it with me, and let me save you some money. So this is a little bit about the Virginia Solar Act market. The Clean Economy Act was passed in 2019, which was what I just mentioned to you. HB 2034, we helped pass recently to allow schools and non-jurisdictional customers to take advantage of solar power purchase agreements in southwest Virginia. And I went over the electricity rates rising. So I've kind of bored you to tears for a little bit about who I am and all this other stuff. Let me tell you a little bit about more about Secure Futures. So basically, we were founded in '04 by Tony Smith. And to date, we have developed over 75 projects in and around Virginia, totaling more than 15 megawatts. However, one of the more exciting things about my company is that we're the first and only solar developer to be a B corporation. Anybody know what that means? Most people don't, because I haven't heard of it before I started. Being a B corporation means that we meet the highest standards of verified social and environmental performance and public and legal transparency to balance profit and purpose. Our main goal is to have a positive impact for the employees, the community, and the environments. This makes the company not only a great place to work for me, but a place that tries to make things better wherever we go. In addition to this, we're the first to make PPAs available and use them to benefit school districts. And I'm going to take a side note here before I go into partners, because on Tuesday, southwest Virginia became the first, that we had the first school to go solar in southwest Virginia. Wise County passed the, and approved our phase one for their schools. So that is exciting news for solar in southwest Virginia. That means we're actually going to be able to start hiring some people soon. And I don't know about you guys, but, I mean, I'd love to see more jobs around here. That's one of the reasons I went to Richmond. It's one of the reasons that, you know, I stayed employed by the company that I was at in Richmond, was because I couldn't find anything that suited my skills around here that I wanted to do. So let's talk about our partners real quick. And you guys can stop me anytime with questions, okay? These are our partners. Now, we use the term partners because we truly do work together with each customer. We give them the most, and we try to give them the most benefits from solar and the best experience possible. You're going to recognize a lot of these names. I mean, Richmond, Augusta, Waynesboro, Orange. Our biggest compliment from these partners is that they are impressed with our work after the sale of installation. Essentially, every year, if you decide to move forward with this, I'll come back and tell you how well it performed. Or one of my constituents will. We're going to come back, and if it's not right, we're going to make it right. And I'm getting ready to go into how that works. But before I do that, the performance reviews and the satisfaction of our customers is why that 70% of our customers in the educational space are repeat clients. We've had second and third, and even fourth phases with some of these school districts that have 37, 40 schools in their district, go back and do roof restoration, et cetera. I'll show you a little bit more about that shortly. But you might be asking, how do we do this stuff? Well, I'm telling you that I'm going to get you solar with no upfront cost, right? That doesn't seem real. That seems fake. It seems like a scam. It's not. The way it works is from the finance, build, own, operate, and maintain. What does that mean? Well, that means that we finance it. We take out a loan to finance the solar arrays on your school. We build the system. We own it, operate it, and maintain it for the entire length of the power purchase agreement. Okay? This is one of the reasons we're so successful with it, is because we mitigate the risk of user. And you only purchase the power that the system produces. Okay, that's the key, is we size the arrays correctly to each school that it's on. And I've worked with Mr. Dean and Mark to essentially get all of your power builds, and I've had them for the last, I've got them for the last two years. We have an engineering team that went through every power bill for every month, looked at the peak and the demand charges, and rather than bore you to tears with all that, we're going to be able to offset a very large percentage of your energy usage, and I'll show you that in a little bit. You only purchase the power that the system produces, so if something goes down, you still have power from the power company. The single largest risk to this type of deal is that the system doesn't work for a short amount of time. In that case, we come to fix it, and we'll credit you the difference in the power that we weren't able to make for you. Also, at the end of every year, we do a true one. If the system didn't produce, or it was an unseasonably rainy year and we fell short a little bit, you don't pay us for that. We'll pay you back for it. Okay? The other thing that I like about Secure Futures, and this is part of our three-legged stool, is the educational programs. We all know that SOL is, SOLs and everything else are a big deal. We work with the NEED program, the National Energy Education Development Program, to give workshops to teachers for K through 12, and materials for teachers K through 12s to actually present to the students. I'm passionate about it, because STEM is a pretty big part of the future of the United States, and we're going to see a lot more people rolling into that. This is SOL, and we do also have one more thing in addition to that, which is our throwing solar shade program. We work with the U.S. Department of Energy, and we help students get a little bit more into that. Now, rather than me sit here and tell you about it, I hope the video is going to play. All right. Red volume?
My name is Carolyn Miller. I'm a senior at Fort Defines High School and Shenandoah Valley Governor's School, and I did my project on maximizing photovoltaic cell efficiency.
My name is Cheryl Brookshank, and I'm a junior at Fort Defines High School. I looked into various solutions for reducing my high school's impact as a heat island.
I'm Jack Solado. I'm a student at Open High School Physics of Solar Panels.
My name is Lauren Bren. I'm a senior and AccuDota A member at Fort Defines High School in the Shenandoah Valley of Virginia. Can Orchard Hill Farms and existing poultry farm be converted to solar energy by putting solar panels on the roofs of the turkey houses?
I'm just gonna add while this is playing, Jack, whose future marriage is now a veteran and former employee, Secure Futures, so we can hire and recruit.
I gained a lot of valuable experience on multiple grounds. I helped review the upcoming TSS program plans as a student who experienced it firsthand, which allowed me to see both sides of the narrative. I also assisted with the development of a grant application that was aimed at helping students like me access technology that was not available in our rural areas, which will hopefully open the door for students to better participate in TSS as they work virtually.
I'm hoping to go to a college with a good engineering program, so I can become a mechanical engineer and continue to work with renewable energy.
Thank you for the opportunity. It's been amazing.
So, those are real students that we helped with our throwing solar shade program and the NEED educational development that we hired. But I'm gonna go on to the next one, if I can get that. There we go. So, this is part that you guys are probably more interested in than maybe some of the other areas. Roofing is the last leg of our three-legged school. So in addition to solar savings and education, we have roofing. We offer a very unique option in the solar industry, and it's called resilient solar roof restoration, okay? This with solar is a way to extend the life of roofs that may be towards the end of their life. Essentially, we can restore the roof with a 20 to 25-year warranty that matches the length of the power purchase agreement. In cases where this is needed, the savings from solar typically pay for the roof restoration, which we finance over 15 years if you choose not to pay for it directly out of pocket, okay? You know, we allow this as an option to kind of mount, lean, fill the roofs, and to give you guys a cheaper option, which I'll show you how much cheaper soon, okay? I wanted you to see what this actually looks like. So this is Lee Orange County Schools that we did. This was actually very recent, so just bear with the video.
I've worked a total of 14 years in facilities management, all of them that were founded. I was aware of various roof restoration processes that never looked to be guaranteed for a 25-year life type of a solar contract. Our flat-roofed roofs entered the preschools for low and solar. The three schools that are receiving panels on a flat roof were never even an option until we were informed about the restoration process. Roof restoration made a big difference, and we went from five to eight schools who stole solar. Since we don't have a dedicated fund for anything on the minor roof repairs, the roof restoration, and that we're able to get three of our schools' roofs restored and guaranteed for 25 years, and avoided the larger cost of replacing them. For a complete school to be re-roofed, we have to ask the county for additional money. So in small counties like this, roof restoration is a big deal. There are also minor repairs that we don't have to do, thanks to the roof restoration. So we'll have capital to reinvest for other projects.
So I'll jump out of that, and we'll go to recommending the project phases. This is kind of the meat and potatoes, guys. I've got hard copies if you want them. These are slightly different than the board presentation I had previously, so I've got hard copies for each one. One, two, three, four, yes, I've got five. Okay, great. So, phase one, the size is basically 1.19 megawatt, and that includes Eltonob, Lee County Career Center, Rosehill Elementary School, Lehigh School, and Jonesville Middle. You're getting an 82% energy offset from what we've actually ran up there. And year one savings in energy is $25,868 per gentleman, okay? Over 25 years, you guys would realize a little over a million dollars just from phase one in the energy savings. Now, I think that we're undershooting this because of the 2019 act I told you about, and how electric rates are rising at a rapid rate, more than they have. In the past three years, or excuse me, 15 years, they've risen almost 3.5%. They are expected to go much higher than that. We're also guaranteeing you the rate that you're gonna pay for the future, okay? For this 25 years. Now, at the end of the power purchase agreement, should you choose to go forward with this, at the end of the power purchase agreement, you can buy the panels that are on your roofs for pennies on the dollar, and it's really, really cheap, okay? Or you can just say, hey man, solar panels are smaller now, can you just come take these off and do a little? Okay? Now, in order to get this done, we would actually have to go through roof restoration on a few schools, and I'll show you how that matters in just a second. If you chose to go through phase one, you're not obligated to go through phase two. Phase two would give you an additional savings, almost $50,000 saved in year one if you chose to do both. The most counties usually do a multi-phase approach, where phase one happens, and then they come back and do phase two, and then they'll, you know, look at other options to try to flush out to 100%. Based on the feedback that we've gotten from Brian and Mark, we took everything we had on the ground and put it all on the roofs, okay? And that's why you might see some of the numbers slightly different, it's because some of the roofs are smaller than the ground roofs that we had. Any questions so far? Pals, concerns? And I'll move on to the next area. So, here's the roof restoration savings. Now, what you're gonna be looking at is the roof square foot of each individual site. Now, we Google mapped these, and I actually went on every one of these, plus a lot more, with the manufacturer's rep and with the preferred contractor. And essentially, you're looking at the traditional replacement cost as is at a 12.6-inch range, which is what I know you guys got for Lehigh and everything else. Our roof restoration cost is obviously cheaper. Think of what we're applying on these roofs as liquid EPDM or fluid applied membrane, okay? We are saving 56,000 at Eltonob, 70,000 at Rosehill, and $235,000 at Lee Career Tech. You're gonna be looking at $361,000 in just savings on the roof salon by going with the roof restoration option that we have. And this is something that I have references for you to check if you ever have any questions, but I believe that, you know, you can see kind of where we've been. Now, any questions so far on this? No? Okay. I'll move forward, I'm trying to move forward, is my mouse just? Maybe disconnect. Here we go, next. Okay, it's seven. All right. So the next part, this is kind of how we hope that the contract process will go. We've been working with Brian and Mark for a while, and essentially, once we get past this, this is a board approval for the engineering and leak and interconnection. And you guys have already been through our LATP and everything else, and this would be the power purchase agreement execution after that, where we conduct procurement of all the materials and labor, make out all our loans, et cetera, and then we come into final engineering, where we send an engineer to each building to make sure that the roof can withstand what we're actually gonna be putting it on, pounds per square inch. This is gonna be hopefully a locally sourced engineer. We're trying to keep all the money that comes out of this in the local community. Our goal is to develop 30 jobs by the end of 2023, early 2024, with Mountain High Community College and employing people in the area. That's it so far. Any questions? Do you want to see what the arrays look like on the roofs? Do you want me to go through any of that stuff?
Probably sign a contract where we know the roofs can withstand this.
If they don't, if they don't withstand it, then the contract is not ongoing.
So what's this doing for Lee County Public Schools? Just cut the chase?
Cut the chase, we're saving money.
Tell me how.
By giving you a lower rate of electricity per watt purchase than the electric companies and a lower escalator over the next 25 years.
So are you gonna apply 100% of the power needed to each of those buildings?
Close to it, 86%, 83%.
So then we still gotta have to purchase from the power company, too?
You'll have a smaller bill from the power company, yes. We could not get to $100 offset without using actual ground.
Now, how do you make your money?
How do we make our money? Good question. So, we have investors. You may have heard of the Hartz Group, who just, they invested 25 billion in us. Basically, we own and operate these arrays. We can take things that you can't. Since you're a government industry or a government entity, if you will, you cannot take the depreciation of the system. You also can't take the federal ITC tax credits. You can't take any of those programs that are available. We can take those and we make a little bit of money, and we're lucky to stay afloat. We try to pass as much off as we can to the schools, and you can definitely check on that. We've done a really good job on multiple others.
And I think you said you could get to 100%, but some of the arrays would have to be on ground.
Yeah, I can get to 100%. If you want me to get to 100%, I can, but I would have to use ground. And what we try not to do, and, you know, through, thank you for working with me, and I know it's been a long process, we've been at it since, what, February, March? Basically, we've had them on the ground, we've had them on the roof, we've had them halfway on the ground and on the roof. I can get to 100% at the schools that we're choosing, but it's gonna be on the ground. And with what we've got so far, I think we're a break starting. If you decide you want to get to 100% on the end of them, then you can tell me to put them on the ground later. I'll show them to you. I don't know why my mouse has decided. Oh, thank you. Hold on. It did?
I think some of us talked at one time, you know, we didn't want a solar array right up front of our buildings. In some places, it's just hard to get the ground to get those. That's why I told him, go with the roof, they're outside, and they're not affecting the ground.
Yeah. So there's Eltonob. Essentially, we're using the part of the roof that we can. If you look at the lower inset picture, that top part of the roof is gravel, balasted, and I can't restore it, but I can restore the rest of the roof there. We give you a 25-year warranty on it, and we put panels on. Rosehill, we can get everything restored except for the small little addition, and all of this stays on the roof, but we did get to 100% offset on Rosehill. With Lee County Career Tech, we got to 98%, and 98% energy offset, so it's pretty close. Lehigh was hard. We initially put the array up on the hill where that little logo is, but I know that the, what is it, the van uses that and some other folks use that for practice.
The van practices up there.
We don't want to take that away, you know? I get that, like, we want to give you the best option possible, so we know you're getting your roof for it, and we know the bits are being approved and everything. So, we're gonna get all the roof and get to 65% offset. And this is how schools typically start. You can always add back to it if you want to get 100% offset, but this will save you some money in the beginning. And there's Jonesville Middle, also 100% offset. So we were able to get that out there. And then, that's it. That's what I've got. I'm sure you guys have tons of questions for me, maybe, maybe not, but would you like a board brief to see the references that we have?
Of course, Lehigh's getting a new roof, we approved that last month. Jonesville had a new roof three, two years ago on Eltonob and Rosehill. Part of those roofs, I don't know if any of you have been up on them, but they have gravel on them. He can't do anything with those, it's the part that's just completely flat, but it's nothing on them, he can restore.
Yeah, I can restore all that, you get some 25-year warranty. We talked about how we're gonna do that, repairs money and everything else, and this is all no cost upfront. And, yeah, I'm from here, I didn't believe in it, my name's attached to it, so I know if this goes bad, it'll follow me around for the rest of my life. I believe in it, and I wouldn't be here if I didn't. Because I had a cushy remote job doing this before, but I really want to make more jobs because I don't want my daughter to move when she's eight.
So I guess the one simple question for me, Lehigh, the electric bill monthly runs, what, five, 7,000? Five to 7,000?
I assume that it works from five to 10.
Yeah.
Depending on.
So I'd say it's $7,000 through, if I'm being correct.
Yes.
You all are getting solar energy. So, roughly, what do you say the bill will be when you hit that?
Oh, it'll be 60, you said Lehigh, right?
That's right, north.
Right.
So, you've got a $7,000 monthly bill. What's it gonna be with these panels? That's, oh.
Yeah, we make money by selling that.
Right.
Yeah, and we give it to you at a lower rate than what they do. But yeah, it's, give me just a second.
I think that, and I hope mine, I say that if you mention it.
Go ahead.
The tax credit, they can get a certain amount of it on the array, just forgiven with the tax credits, so.
Yeah. And that's, the tax credit's a depreciation, you guys can't take.
At this point, I'll speak for it, and please tell me if you're involved in this now, but I would like to table this, put in unfinished business for the next meeting, if you get some details from me and looking at the contract and reference alert. I haven't had time to really talk to him about it at all, I've been busy, and I'm sure everybody else has, too. I'm interested in it, especially with the safe money, get some roof bids.
Yeah.
I've got two years left in this term, I'm not sure if I'm running again. I may be, may not be, but still, I'd like to make things better for King.
Yeah, that's the little point of it, is maybe things better. And you guys, you know, you'll have my cell phone, feel free to call me with actual questions or anything like that, if you want to talk to the roofing people who've been on the roofs, or let me know, because I've got, if you want more roofs on them, I can get more roofs on them. I walked almost every one of them.
Sounds like you're getting plates worn, it's probably where it makes us start.
I agree.
If we do.
Yeah. Would you like a board brief? That it contains all this information and references that you can call and check.
Sure.
Absolutely. Sorry to take so much of your time. I know you guys have been through a lot, a whole lot. I know you guys are dealing with all kinds of different things.
Go ahead.
I understand where you're at.
Sure.
You're welcome.
Awesome.
There's no more questions, I believe, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
It'll be interesting, like I said, we'll just go ahead and put on the unfinished business for the next meeting.
All right. Give us some more work done.
Last action item, I got contacted by both high schools, when they looked at the coaching staff, and they asked about volleyball. They saw it should be at the same place that softball, baseball, basketball is. That would be an increase of $6,000. I've already told you the budget's gonna be tight, but I did tell both principals I would bring it before you. I talked to both of them, they both recommended it. They think that volleyball's on the same level as baseball, softball, basketball, but it would cost $6,000, be $2,000 increase for the head coach, $1,000 increase for the assistant, which would be $3,000 at each school for a total of $6,000.
Any discussion on this action item?
How many players do you have? Got any idea?
You average 12 to 14 on a volleyball team. Sometimes it's down to 10, depending on how many kids come out. You made, your daughter, I think, plays on.
She plays both. It's basically a dumb soccer, same, same bunch of girls. We've actually had a lot more coming out of volleyball than basketball. It's just been slaying, been 35 kids, tried out for varsity last year. They play roughly 20, 22 games. So, I don't disagree, I mean, it's a lot of work, same amount of kids, same amount of games. I don't have a problem with it, I'll say.
Like I said, it is $6,000 if we are running tight, so.
Do you recommend it?
I recommend it because I do think it's on the same level. Financially, I think it's gonna be tough.
Do you recommend it now, or do you recommend it later? That's the next question.
We planned the budget without it. I think, like, the coaches took the job with the budget we had, I think we could look at it next year and see how things are going next year. And that's no offense to any of the coaches, I coached volleyball, so, I mean, I think everybody knows I'm a volleyball fan, but we planned the budget without it, it's just hard to add stuff to the budget when you're already running tight anyway.
That could've gotten going, that's right.
Yeah, we approved that back in March, and everybody knew what the budget, I mean, what it was.
Do we have any motion on this action, or do we need anything? Maybe wait till next year?
They're tableing the next year, or there's no motion, they'd have.
Same. Do we?
The House will have a motion.
Do we have a motion on action, Adam? E. And I'll say, yes, I am not opposed to do this next year, if we can.
I'm not hoping to do it next year, we can add it in.
Yeah, we can plan the budget with it.
Correct. No motion, no action.
Thanks, sir.
We have a motion, go in closed session, Mr. Heinz.
We go into closed session, discuss personnel in the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711A1, to discuss school's process plans on the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711A19, to discuss student discipline in the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711A2, to discuss the release of compulsory attendance pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 22.1-254B1, to discuss pending and threatened litigation in the Code of Virginia, 2.2-3711A7.
Motion to debate minutes, second.
Second.
All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye, we're now in closed session.